Good evening. It's Monday, September the 16th. We're in the governor's room in the community center and this is the St. Peter School Board meeting. And I'd like to call a meeting in order. To do so, we would consider and adopt the agendas before us.
So...
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries and the agenda is adopted. Would you please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance? The pledge of allegiance.
...to the fight of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, in our nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As per habit, as we go through our agenda this evening, if there's a member of our audience that wishes to speak to a particular item, our cards in the back that you can fill out with your question and you can get them to Ms. Sarah on the corner. When we get to that agenda item, we have a lot of time and opportunity to speak to those agenda items. Next thing we have tonight is our consent agenda. I will read through the consent agenda. Anyone finds an individual item they wish to deal with at the end, they can pull it out or a motion to approve will be in order. Tonight, in our consent agenda, we are approving the regular board meeting events of August the 19th, 2019. We are approving bills of $2,252,863.72 and wire transfers of $2,458,841.5 for August of 2019. Mr. Chair, the bills are all in order and up to date. Thank you. Treasurer. And we have a number of personnel items, which is pretty normal for the first few months of the year. We are, this evening, approving of an increase in hours from 6.5 to 6.75 hours a day for the St. Peter Middle School paraprofessional. This increases due to an afternoon guard crossing assignment. We are approving a maternity leave for a teacher at St. Peter High School from September 16th, 2019 until November 27th, 2019. We are approving a maternity leave for a teacher at St. Peter Middle School from September 23rd, 2019 until November 11th, 2019. We are accepting the resignation of an ELA teacher at St. Peter Middle School. We are approving the hiring of a night custodial engineer at St. Peter Middle School effective August 23rd, 2019. This is a replacement position. We are approving the hiring of a part-time school nurse for the 2019-20 school year. This is a replacement position. We are approving an increase in hours from 4.75 to 6.5 hours a day for an ECSE paraprofessional. This increase is serving as a replacement. We are approving the hiring of an ECSE paraprofessional for the 2019-20 school year. This is a replacement position. We are approving the hiring of an ECSE paraprofessional for the 2019-20 school year. This is also a replacement position. We are approving the hiring of a special education paraprofessional at South Elementary for the 2019-20 school year. This is also a replacement position. We are approving the hiring of a special education paraprofessional at South Elementary for the 2019-20 year. This is also a replacement position. The approval of a hiring of a special education paraprofessional at South Elementary at North Elementary for the 2019-20 school year. This is a replacement position. We are accepting the resignation of a special education paraprofessional at North Elementary effective August 20th, 2019. We're accepting the resignation of a 2000... Accepting the resignation of a special education paraprofessional at St. Peter Middle School effective August 28th, 2019. We are approving the hiring of a special education paraprofessional at St. Peter Middle School for the 2019-20 school year. This is a replacement position. We are approving the hiring of a special education paraprofessional at St. Peter High School for the 2019-20 school year. This is a replacement position. We are approving the hiring of a special education paraprofessional at St. Peter High School for the 2019-20 school year. This is a replacement position. We are approving the termination of a special education paraprofessional at North Elementary effective September 9th, 2019. We are hiring... We are approving the hiring of a special education paraprofessional at St. Peter Middle School for the 2019-20 school year. This is a replacement position. We are approving a maternity leave for a teacher at St. Peter High School from December 6th, 2019 through February 18th, 2020. We are approving the hiring of a .66 English Language Arts teacher at St. Peter Middle School for the 2019-20 school year. This is a replacement position. We are approving the increase in hours from 6.5 to 6.75 hours a day for four St. Peter Middle School paraprofessionals retroactive to the beginning of school. This increase is to accommodate their morning special duty... Special education bus duty assignments. We are approving the hiring of an additional coaches due to increased athletic participation in girls soccer, boys soccer, and girls volleyball. And lastly, we are declaring of equipment as obsolete due to non-working order and no longer useful or no longer needed as part of the physical education curriculum. A list of these items has been included in your package. And that is the consent agenda for this evening. If there are no individual items, a motion to approve will begin.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed, the motion carries. Consent agenda is approved. Thankfully, the student spotlight was a student missing.
I know. Of course, like every month, I tell you, these student council kids are the busiest ones in the building. So, we have one out of two of our co-presidents here tonight to introduce to you Alex Hope Nigra is with us tonight. Izzy Lind is the other representative. So hopefully, with two of them, we'll be able to make it to a few more meetings this year. But I am pleased to introduce Alex to you. She's the daughter of Concepcion and Jose Hope Nigra. And I'll let her talk about some of her activities and interests and classes and then maybe follow it up with just a brief report of student council.
So, yeah, my name is Alex Hope Nigra. I'm currently a senior at St. Peter High School. I am the co-student council president with Izzy Lind. So, some things that I've evolved there, I am the... Our student volleyball manager for the third year now. And I threw the high school skating program last spring. I have become a senior now. And along with that, I hope that I go on to MSU in nursing classes and go up. And then, so now, some things that we are doing currently in student council is planning... Oh, great. So, some things that we have right now are... We're planning our carnival, which... So, homecoming is October 4th. And we have set up slides on the TV screens of the school to show the homecoming shirts that were designed this year. And then, also, we are... What we just announced candidates, so right now, we're currently planning with them how the homecoming parade will work and the videos that they will be doing and working with them to see how we can incorporate teachers into their homecoming rituals. And so, currently, we're planning the... October 4th, this is set up already, we said it all. But after classes are done, we have a carnival, a pepus and a carnival. So, we are currently working through games we can involve and how we get teachers and other students from the audience involved into our games during the pepus with candidates and decorating for homecoming that week. Along with figuring out how to make kind of URL to send out to the student body so that they have a choice in what dress of days they want and like what theme of homecoming dance they would like to see. And we're just figuring out how to get not just the student council members involved in planning homecoming, but also the whole student body. And not just the homecoming, but also in decorating at the school and different pepus that we have and just our dress of day they ask.
Alex, I have a question for you. Were you intending on nursing career in the High Step Physical Science Academy just made you think, yep, that's really what you wanted to do? Or did you take that sequence of courses and try to find out if that's what you wanted?
Yeah, so I took the High Step course, like having an idea that I'm on a tour, but not quite knowing where I want to be in the nursing field. And so, High Step really like broadened that you don't necessarily have to be a nurse, a PR, something to be in radio therapy or different... There's so many different types of nurses I just didn't know about. Which I have.
Others? Thank you so much. I look forward to seeing you at the end of the table. And speaking of at the end of the table, that gets us into our action items. And one of the things we will do in our action items tonight is to approve those school presenters. But first up, we have a consideration of preliminary levy for 2020. This is something we do every September. And we always do the same thing, but numbers change a little bit. We always endorse the maximum and we don't really know what the final levy is going to be until December. And Mr. Regner, the doctor who's in the finance, he will walk us through where we are at this time. Go ahead.
Thank you. As Mr. Carlsberg said, this is a preliminary levy and the numbers, they actually changed in Friday again today, so they do change a little bit. It's a preliminary levy. It sets a maximum amount. If you approve the maximum, it sets a maximum amount that you can approve in December. You can adjust it, you know, you can adjust it downward a little bit if it cause to be. But you cannot go up from the maximum that you set here today. There was a number of changes, there are a few changes this year, which I had to highlight and the percentages and things like that. Last year's final levy was about $6.6 million. And this year, as of last Friday, it was $5,000 higher. Some of the individual categories changed. This afternoon, late this afternoon, they came out with the fourth revision since Monday and it went up $8,000. I'm not quite sure where, but you know, those are the kind of changes that we might see. And that's one of the reasons you typically have always done the maximum because otherwise you're locked into a number if you just do a number. So, like I said, levy as of Friday was about $5,000 higher than last year. There was a couple of internal changes. The levy is... The overall levy is like a component of 40 different items or different items and they all adjust a little bit. The... And I tried to highlight in the package there, there's about six different items that changed, you know, more than a few thousand dollars, you know, if you're up or down. Just highlight some of the capital projects levy rolled off. We talked about that for a number of years. That was the last one there. We did add the current tech levy higher this year. We had never levied for that fully in the past, but we expanded the program over the last few years. And the state is really, we just talked with the High Step, that's one thing that we can levy for part of the cost for doing that. And that's what we've chosen to put that in, at least the initial levy here. Full pay up and LTFM and debt service and Q comp are the other items.
Debt service and Q comp are the other items that have changed a little bit from last year, either up or down, to kind of change, you know, things change. Another big driver of the levy amount is enrollments. As enrollments go up or down, the levy goes up or down. The more enrollment you have, obviously, the higher the levy becomes because of the number of students there. And that changes a lot of formulas. Pretty much most of the 40 items, they're calculated on, you know, how many enrollments you have or things like that, and they go through a formula. And one thing to remember with the levy, a lot of the levy, you know, obviously, the $6 million comes from the local taxpayers, but we do receive a lot of aid through levy too. It's equalized by the state and that's a complicated formula depending upon students and your tax values. I guess basically, you know, page two, and we went over this extensively, hopefully, at the finance committee last week, the difference in the levies from last year, we showed like the last three-year levies and then the preliminary from this year and kind of the difference. And as you can see on the bottom, right now, the difference is about $5,000 or 0.8%. So, it's basically no change from last year. And then, the third page is just kind of an update on some of the market values that have done in the St. Peter School District as far as market values, referendum values, tax capacities and those type of items that drive a lot of the calculations for this. And you can kind of see a little bit of history on the levy as far as we go there. I guess what we recommend you to do is to recommend the maximum or certify the maximum. What we'll do is certify the maximum. And what that does then is basically drives the tax statements that are produced, the preliminary ones that the tax owners will get in November. And then, between now and our December meeting, we'll work on with the finance committee in finalizing the final levy amounts.
Just a couple of quick comments. I think one of the things we always need to remember with the levy is it's a levy 19, pay 20 for fiscal year 21. So, it's back up, it pushes us back into the 2021 school year before you're actually receiving the levy money. But we think it's important to at least have the option to consider things like that career and technical education levy. We certainly are, and you'll see this later on in the agenda, making some very concerted efforts to strengthen that career and technical education program and the offerings we have and the equipment we have in that program. So, I think I wanted to note that. The other one, this is a little bit of a soapbox for me, but the long-term facility maintenance levy with the age and condition of buildings is illogical. So, what happens is we build a new high school, we still have all of our other buildings exactly the same, and our levy ability drops because the age, average age of our buildings goes down. So, it doesn't make any sense. If you would decommission a building, that would be one thing, but we still have exactly the same needs as we had before. It's like, that's why we might want to think about is in terms of our legislative advocacy coming up here on this next legislative session.
Just to summarize a little bit, we're talking... You're getting your figures from the state. They're telling you what the numbers are in essence or what the equations are.
What, yeah, the maximums can be there. We have some, you know, variability in amounts we can put in or levy. And then, you can always, as a board or, you know, as a district, come in less on some of them. But the maximums, they're giving us what they are and they're long, complicated equations that change it, yeah.
And we're talking local tax dollars, but again, the state and recognition of those is putting money into that. So, those local tax dollars are buying more state aid. So, it's a good investment for the community that way.
Correct. A lot of the numbers that if you don't levy for it, you don't get the corresponding aid with it. So, you know, I don't want to say it's a one-to-one thing. Like LTFM, I guess is a good example. That is actually one, pretty much one-to-one based on us. You know, our levy is 400 and some thousand dollars and we get an additional $400,000 in aid to, you know, to use, so.
And even by, if we do vote to consider the maximum, we can change it later down. You can't change it up. And even by certifying the maximum, we're not talking about a large tax increase at all.
No.
Minimal, with .08% you have in this projection.
Yeah. And like I said, that'll adjust a little bit. It won't be that, but there'll probably be no changes what we will do. Kind of what happens is, you know, the levy is an actually like a 40-page document and there's 300 schools. And I think sometimes that the... Once they get out to the schools and they got to the schools last Monday and the schools start looking at them and they say, hey, something's a little off here. And then, they'll contact the state and the state will do an updated run. And by the time we're probably done with this, we'll have in the teens of updates. Some will affect us, some won't. Yeah, so. We're at four in the last week, so.
Thank you. What was that percentage again?
0.08 is the max. That's the existing numbers, yeah.
Yep, all right.
I think one thing always that's good to note is the change in valuation from one year to the other. And our district valuation this, from last year to this year, is increasing by about 60... 61 million, almost 62 million. And since '14, so in the last six years, it's gone up by $200 million. So, that does affect how many dollars we've run this across, whatever the mill rate is. And that affects the total dollars generated as well. So, when market valuations go up, the mill rate can sometimes come down or stay flat and still generate more dollars from one year to the next. And I appreciate very much the work that the finance committee has been working with you, Mr. Regner, to give all of these options and everything to get us to a spot where we're looking at less than 1% on the max for this year. So, if... Does anyone else have questions or comments? If not, a motion to approve would be...
Move to approve the max.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the max. Further discussions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pro the same sign. And motion is approved. We will be talking about this every month between now and December. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next item we have tonight is to the consider approval of the student representative and the alternate student representative to the school board, Ms. Ingele. And Alex, you're back up front.
We're back again.
You gotta get, Alex, you gotta get at least four votes, okay? Do you want to start campaigning now?
I think she did a nice job right here.
She did.
Yes, so every year, the board actually approves our student representatives as members of the board. They can... They don't have voting options, but they... The board is always happy to take your input on anything that you might hear. And next time, you'll have a seat at the table by Ms. Hager.
And importantly, I think you're also eligible for some training at the MSBA. And I think if you can afford yourself of that, you should do it because it is a high-quality training experience and it puts you on a similar plane to other members. And it will be something that you will use later in life regardless of where you go or what you do.
And when approved, make sure you put this on your resume, so.
Yeah.
So, motion to approve.
I move to approve Alex and Izzy as student rep and alternate for this school year.
Second. And we have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pro the same sign. Motion approved. You're elected. There you go.
Congratulations.
Next item we have tonight for our action is consider the approval of plans to use AAA funds to support high school programs and facilities. Dr. Olson.
So, as you're aware, the AAA campaign raised funds in a number of ways, but in one specific manner, there were funds generated through donations from individuals, sometimes classes, the class of 1963, for an example. And they are result in those plaques on the wall. The total amount generated through that amount, through both in-kind contributions and cash contributions for just that specific part of the program, is about $110,000. Of that amount, about $40,000 has been expended, so there's about $70,000 left in the AAA campaign. And through work with various committees that we've worked in, at the facilities committee, the co-curricular committee, the Gessen donations committee, the finance committee, everybody sort of had an opportunity to take a look at how those funds might be spent. There were a number of ideas generated. And of those ideas, the two that surfaced were the purchase of a CNC... Part of the purchase of a CNC plasma cutting system that could be used, Mrs. Ingldinger, in current technical education.
Sure. Mr. Reeser provided a nice write-up for all of you about the ways that he plans to use this machine. But the plans are to use it as an interdisciplinary tool, not just in his mechanics shop, but also in our art program and our physics classes. Some of that software is some pretty intense software for kids to learn. So, across the board, I think this plasma cutting machine will set our program apart from others in the area. I don't know another high school program that has a machine like this right now. So, we're pretty excited about the possibilities.
Yeah, and it really will continue to spark interest in the whole manufacturing academy idea that is out there. And then, secondly, there are some equipment for live broadcasting capabilities, I think for both the gymnasium and the performing arts center. So, you want to...
Yeah, correct. Actually, it's not just the... The performing arts center will be a slightly different beast, but two... The brand name is Pixel Up, but there are two live motion sensor cameras that then provide a live feed to the internet. So, as Dr. Olson always likes to say, in case he's up at his cabin, he can still tune in...
Still watch the grandkids.
Tune in to what's going on on the basketball court or on the football field. So, the quote that we have in here covers two of those, along with computers to run those and installation and training. Along with that, we also... This is the first year we've been able to run digital media productions course. So, some of that additional equipment is there as well. You know, we've got that beautiful studio off of the media center, finally seeing some use. It might look a little crazy in there now because they've got green screens up and two out of those three rooms and some nice lighting systems. But now that it's a course, we actually know some of the equipment that will be required to really pull it off.
And we think in both of these, there's an opportunity to hit all three areas of arts, athletics and academics through the expenditure of $30,000 of those funds. That still leaves a balance of $40,000 for ongoing and future consideration. So, I think would be our recommendation and the recommendation of a number of all of the committees, really with the finance committee being the last, that we move forward with approving the use of $30,000 in AAA funds to support those two items. We'll see you after.
I think the facilities committee, our committee was the first to see it. And as you said, it went through four committees. So, I'd move approval of the use of the AAA funds.
Second.
And we have a second. Is there not also some matching grant for that plasma?
Yeah, Mr. Reeser has connections with the American Welding Society for possibility of a grant. It's not open yet. He plans to pursue that, which we have the ability to do now because as of last year, our students could actually earn a certain level of certification in welding in his program.
Super. And we'll be able to livestream athletic events.
Yeah.
Fantastic. We have a motion and a second. Is there anything else? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pro the same sign. And the motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you. Exciting.
We'll be moving forward tomorrow morning.
Are we interviewing for broadcasters now? Or is that next week? No, no, I'm not. Just wondering.
Are we bringing back the student news?
Because I'm sure they're going to be banging the door down wanting to get the microphone.
Student news.
That completes our action items for the evening and we're moving into some information items. We have five of those tonight. And we're starting with our North Star accountability report. Welcome, Darren.
Thank you, Board Chair Carl's Root, members of the board. As you know, every year at this time, the spring assessments have finished up and I put together a report along with... up, and I put together a report along with the administrative team about, uh, student achievement, so it's the Annual Report of Student Achievement. In your board packet tonight, I did include a section of, uh, that report, and, um, this has to do with the, the Annual North Star Report. Some years back, Minnesota put together teams of individuals, um, across the state to identify a way, uh, that we can support schools or identify schools for the successes they have that align with every student succeeds at, which is a federal, um, law. Um, so the North Star, uh, report was generated from that. Uh, every three years, um, there, uh, through the process of just gathering the data, each three years, there's a designation year. And the year of two thousand eighteen was a designation year, so that was a, a year ago this last spring. And so our results from two thousand nineteen are, are included in this section of the report, and they only talk about the five data points that are included in this part of the report. And so there's three stages to this report. Uh, the first stage has, um, data as far as achievement levels in math, reading, and then also, um, results from access score, which is students' language acquisition. So basically, we're matched up against, you know, how is the rest of the state doing, um, or how we're doing versus the rest of the state in math, reading, and language acquisition. Uh, stage number two, um, just takes a look at, excuse me, takes a look at progress. And that's the one we spent a little bit of time last year talking about, like, where are these numbers exactly coming from? Cause what that is looking as, at students that took the MCA assessments last year, and then they compare last year's results to this year, and what they're trying to do is, are students growing? So are they improving based on the prior year score? So those would be, obviously, our fourth graders because they, the first year that students take the MCA assessment is in third grade, and then every year after that, they're able to put a value together. And so they, uh, students earn points based on how many, whether they maintain, um, achievement levels, meeting or exceeding, or they improve. They don't earn any points, um, if they stay partially or not meeting, or they go backwards. Um, so there's some values in there that, based on like, what are, what are the number, what's the average number of points that a student may achieve across the school district that has at least a couple of years of data with MCAs. And then, and then the last stage talks, or, excuse me, also in stage number two is gradu, our graduation rates, um, so our grads, and then the final stage has to do with consistent attendance across the district. All of these values, um, are also calculated by building, and that's something different, um, from our last accountability reporting, that's, that was before the North Star Report, and that, in those reports, it only calculated in schools that were able to take advantage of, uh, Title I funding. So now it's every school, um, in every, um, district, they actually get values and results, um, most of it being obviously pertinent to the, uh, the age of the students that are at that school building. So during our study session on, uh, September thirtieth, we'll dig into these numbers a little bit more, um, that'll break down, um, all of our achievement based on, uh, grades, uh, buildings, um, ACTs, all of the items that we are able to look through, um, and we'll be able to field, um, as many questions as you may have at that point as well, but we just wanted to make sure you're able to see, um, the North Star Report based on just last spring's test results.
Questions for Mr. Jordy?
I think the key point is that September thirtieth study session, the agenda item is the Annual Assessment Report, so we'll get an opportunity to really dig into that in, in detail. You know, in, in many of the districts that I've been in in the last, uh, five years, uh, they have a huge focus on graduation and attendantry. And, you know, um, you can look at all kinds of points of data, but, um, kids gotta be there to be successful, and if they're successful, they're gonna graduate, so I think that's a good measure that you can see we're doing well in St. Peter, and I think those two things aren't necessarily true in many of the districts that we're in, so that's a good one.
Thank you, sir. I'll see you in a little bit.
Sounds good.
Um, next up, uh, Dr. Olson, we have a review. We do this annually in September every year for, uh, approved fundraising plans by site, and we, I shouldn't say we've done this forever, but we've certainly done it the last five years.
Yeah.
Where we try and articulate to the, the public at large, what are the things that you could expect to participate in if you so choose, um, that are related to the school district. As John Carlson always reminds us, that doesn't mean that there aren't other things out there, um, but these are the ones that we know about.
So if you would, I'd ask that the, the principals come forward that have these plans, just to stand for any questions you might have, I think that they're fairly standard from year to year, um, and it's per board policy, fundraising efforts and projects that, uh, has that component to have an annual, uh, presentation of fundraising plans, so, um, if you wanna just start, uh, you might, uh, have Doreen, and then Darren, and then John, and then Annette, does anybody have any specific questions?
I don't... Thanks for coming up, guys.
I could speak to a little, a little bit to the high schools, it being, you know, that used to be probably pages and pages prior to, um, the formation of a boots, booster club, um, which makes, which makes our list, um, our fine arts and, and any of our academic programs that do any fundraising.
I believe, I, I can't remember how many fundraisers there are with the booster club, I know the card is out there and...
Yep, the, the cards, and the cards, uh, had a, if we had great success from those, um, we also do the big, um, golf tournament and the, um...
Booster bash.
The booster bash in the spring.
And there's one more.
Those are the, those are the three biggies. Oh, and memberships, don't forget memberships.
Just to expand on what, I mean, there, there might be associations that aren't affiliated with the school district that may be soliciting for their particular activity, correct? So, but, the ones you have are listed, are, it's a short list, and I, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Olson, report on student enrollment.
I think it's always important to, to, to check in and report on how our enrollment is looking, uh, and we had some budget, or some enrollment numbers as of last Wednesday. They showed that we're up, uh, in our K-12 enrollment, fifty-nine students over what our budget projection is, and that's up even higher over our enrollment at the end of the school year. So that's really good news. Remember that every student generates about seven thousand dollars in revenue in the district, so enrollment is a key driver in finance. These numbers, I checked again today, we're still up fifty-nine students, so that's a good thing. The, the, there's a little bit of a shift in where those numbers actually are, so usually when you, you're in three weeks to, uh, or a little bit more into the school year, you can be fairly confident in where your numbers are at, so we're confident that we're up at fifty-nine students. That number is gonna vary, jump down a bit, but nothing, uh, you know, barring any unforeseen circumstance, that is really unusual. And that's just a reminder, when we look at enrollment, that, uh, later on this fall, we're gonna be, uh, conducting a demographic study, uh, to take a look at with the Hazel Reinhardt Consulting Group, what, uh, enrollment trends should possibly be or could possibly be over the next five, ten years, and at that same time, we'll also be doing a housing and enrollment study. They'll look at the types of housing that, um, would be essentially necessary in the St. Peter School District to continue to attract families with young children, so this is really good news. You don't wanna be going the other direction on enrollment, uh, because then you've got, you know, your problems compounded in terms of your budget, so this is a good report to get, uh, and we're happy with our enrollment numbers. Questions or comments from the board?
We show, um, K-12, twenty-one hundred and ninety-seven kids, um, and then there's a formula that they use to come up with how many pupil units that is and all that other stuff, but, um, so, nice.
And, and as part of the report, some of these people, there've been a question sometimes, why early childhood special education students in the count and not school readiness students, or students who are involved in early childhood family education? The reason for that is those early childhood special education students generate a portion of a weighted average daily membership, so we, uh, we get revenue based on that, so that's why we track that number as well. That number, uh, as you see from the report last week, was fifty-eight, today the number is sixty-five. So the numbers will continue to go up. At the end of the year last year, we were serving slightly over one hundred students, and I think, Mrs. Prackey, that's, that's due to, to screening and identification of students with needs, and then those students get involved in our program. We certainly have the capacity to serve that number.
Thank you. Something that we do watch on a regular basis and, uh, will continue to bring back to the public. Next information item we have tonight is the first reading of Chapter Three. Uh, the Policy Committee has been churning away through that, and, um, who's taking that one? Robert?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, this is, uh, the last chapter that we'll work on this year, and then starting, uh, next, uh, in January, then the committee will start on, uh, Chapter Four. But Chapter Three, I'm gonna try to walk you through it, sixty-sixth, page sixty-six in your, uh, board book, and, uh, the changes are not earth-shattering, but there's some that need to be made and some that are made for convenience, moving, uh, different policies, uh, sections of policies to other policies, so just kinda bear with me, I'll walk you through it fairly quickly. If you have any questions, uh, feel free to stop me. Uh, one of the things we did is we added a couple of positions on page sixty-seven, a couple, Part E and Part F, relating to the requirement that superintendent annually evaluate each principal, and to evaluate each school administrator assigned the responsibility for the school program, so, uh, it's just really clarification that, uh, employees have the right to be, uh, evaluated, and the superintendent is the person to do the evaluation for these particular people. Moving on, and I'm just gonna keep talking unless somebody interrupts me. You'll see on page sixty-eight, and we do this a couple of places in our policy, we changed the word "school district administration" to superintendent. Let me give you an example, it's the responsibility of the old policy, "school district administration" to develop a school environment, on and on and on. Uh, we don't work with the rest of the student, or the rest of the faculty, we work with the superintendent, and the superintendent is responsible to the board, and so the policy's being changed wherever it says "school district administration" to put in the word superintendent in place and strike the word "school district administration." We did add a fairly long section, three, uh, point one, the superintendent of schools, three point one-two, superintendent selection, because of what this board's gonna be going through, uh, shortly. Uh, after the first of the year, uh, you, the board will be entering into a process for hiring of a, a permanent superintendent, and, uh, this outlines what the process will be and what the requirements will be, uh, for the, for the board, for the applicants, et cetera, so, again, you may wanna take a little look at that, I think it's fairly complete, uh, but if you have any questions, let us know. And again, on all of these, we're gonna be coming back with you, back to you next month, I believe, is...
Right.
Uh, for approval, so if you have any comments or any concerns, please, uh, get ahold of myself and John and Vicky?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Uh, moving on, going to page, if I can find it here, seventy-four. This is where we're talking about early dismissal, late start, cancellation of school classes. What we did is we add, uh, put in some language relating to the flexible learning day. That's what we now use almost exclusively, there'd probably be very minimal times that the school actually be closed, and no activities taken place, no educational activities. Uh, for snowstorms, for, uh, any number of things, we use the flexible day so that education goes on, there's not a break. Uh, if there would be, uh, I think the one that Dr. Olson used in committee is a good example, uh, back when I was still with the MSBA, the governor closed, uh, the school district. At the MSBA convention, he announced he was closing because of weather. Well, that would be an actual closing of the school district, so that would, uh, also fall into this particular section, so, uh, we put flexible learning days, uh, issues in. Also, uh, more of a, just a editing change than anything, we're going, we used to have what we called the District Emergency Action Plan, and it's now gonna be called the Crisis Management Plan, and that's been used throughout some of our documents for some time. Um, we talk about some of the crisis-specific procedures that would be used under ALICE, and ALICE is, for those of you that may not be familiar with ALICE, it's a procedure that has, uh, gained, uh, movement nationally, and, and I've actually certified in this now, uh, and I think some of the other board members may also be certified. Um, it's, ALICE stands for Alert, Lockdown, Inform, Counter, Evacuate, uh, procedures for each building, and it's what our faculty and students are working with, uh, as we prepare for, well, something we hope we never use. Moving on, um, we talk about emergency contacts, uh, it used to be emergency telephone numbers, well, there's many ways of contacts now, so it's, it's more of an editing change than anything. The Security Committee is a new committee that came in, I believe it was last year, it's a committee that I serve on, and, uh, it is, uh, made up of, uh, two police officers, uh, parents, uh, staff from the school, the principals are very involved, the superintendent of schools in the past has shared that, I believe there may be a little bit of a change, and, uh, that'll be delegated to somebody else, but, uh, this is the committee that is not a board committee, but it is a committee that will be working with the school district and with the board to keep us informed of what we need to know about security, about enforcement, uh, how our, uh, our school liaison officers, or officer now, soon-to-be officers, I believe, uh, how they're working, uh, some of the issues they're running into, so we wanted to get that into the policy, uh, for, uh, adoption by the board. Uh, moving on, let me see, if you, if, and I'm gonna just jump all the way to the end. You'll see on page eighty-two, um, let me see, can you remember what the, oh, this, this is, uh, we just changed, we took a, a whole list of issues that fell under, um, the Health and Safety Advisory Committee identified, and, and programs and, and plans, and just said, "inapplicable law." There's no need to re, to continue every six months, or every time the legislature meets, or every time there's a court case, or every time the governor or the department do something with a plan, they have to come back and change it, so this ought to have the, the, uh, the, uh, policy and, uh, applied to applicable law. And if you get down to the budget, again, uh, we took a, a significant part of this out because it's practice rather than policy. Uh, this document should be school board policy, not school board procedures or district procedures, so we, we're suggesting it be eliminated. It doesn't change what's done, it just changes, um, how we address it. And then if you get to animals in the classroom, and no, I'm not talking about Drew, I know you thought that, but it isn't, uh, we're moving that to, uh, Chapter Seven, and so that'll be reviewed, be reviewed a little later on when the, uh, uh, new committee gets to them in a year or so. And we're also doing the same thing with, uh, uh, de, uh, deposition of obsolete equipment. That's one we're re, uh, taking out of the, uh, out of the, uh, chapter and eliminating it.
Yeah, well, it's being moved...
It's, again, it's state law and it's, uh, I'm sorry?
It's being moved to Chapter Four.
This one being one of them?
Yeah, this is being moved to Chapter Four.
Like I said, this is being moved to Chapter Four. So I think that's everything we have, and again, please take a chance, a few minutes to look at this and get back to one of the committee members, or to Dr. Peterson, and we'll bring it back up before you for more discussion and a vote, uh, in about a month.
Anybody wanna try and interrupt Bob? No?
Did a good job, Jim.
Thank you.
October fourth.
That's our...
That's the Policy Committee meeting, and then we'll bring it back on October twenty-first to the board meeting.
And the work of the committee's not done. We have some requirements that every year, the board has to review, it's a fairly long list of policies. So as soon as we get down to Chapter Three, we'll be moving into those mandatory policies. Uh, bullying is a good example, uh, we'll be moving into that, so, uh, our work isn't done, and we'll be coming back to you again near the end of the year, uh, calendar year so that, uh, we can adopt those policies.
Yeah, the other piece, uh, that we'll be looking at would be any policies that reflect statutory changes from the last session.
changes from the last session, case law.
And MSBA has sent to us, yeah.
Very good. Last item we have for information tonight is our update on the summer academic programs that we fondly refer to as Read and Feed.
Read and Feed. Oh, my gosh. It seems like a long time ago it was June fifth. A lot has happened since then. We had another great year at Read and Feed and with our Stars Learning Program. So I'll share a little bit with you about that tonight. As you may recall, our district, our middle school site is eligible for a summer food program based on location. It is located in a, it's in a location that it's based on areas of core economic conditions is what the actual definition is by the state. Now, just to give you a heads up, we will be up for re-eligibility this year. So we will need to be waiting until mid-year to see if that site continues to be eligible. And so 2020 is our year to find out. So I will certainly keep you posted on that. But then this, we have been holding the Read and Feed since 2009. So that has been a great run. And the Read and Feed program provides breakfast and lunch to children's ages one to eighteen. There are no income eligibility requirements. Adults can purchase meals as well. Our program this year ran from June fifth to August ninth. As you may recall, a couple of years ago, we extended it, we used to be a Monday-through-Thursday program, and we extended it to Fridays, and that's worked really well for us. During the Read and Feed, we provide opportunities for kids to take books. We have book donations. We also have learning games and supervisors on-site. So that seems to be going quite well. We partner with the city to provide transportation stops, and I've included those locations in your information for tonight. You can see that we added a North Elementary stop, and that's because last year, North Elementary was eligible to have a Read and Feed site as well, but then with the ceiling work, that building wasn't open. So in order to accommodate the students that live in that area, we provided a bus stop at North Elementary, and that seemed to work quite well. We continue to have lots of ridership. We had almost sixteen hundred riders this summer on St. Peter Transit. So that's been great. And then if you take a look just down at the bottom of your document there, you can see our trend, our numbers. And this year, we served eleven thousand eight hundred meals, which averaged about two hundred and fifty-six meals a day. When we started, you can look back and see, we served about thirty-nine hundred meals. So what a great program to provide to the children in our community, and the growth that we've seen has been, has been wonderful. You can see that that's broken down in meals to serve to children and then to adults. So ten thousand eight hundred and eighty meals were served to St. Peter kids this year. So that's a little bit about the Read and Feed. And then secondly, I'd like to report on the Stars Academy program, which kind of really goes hand-in-hand with the Read and Feed, as those students are participants in the Read and Feed when they're at Stars Academy. Because our district has an early, excuse me, an area learning center, we become eligible for targeted services, which allows us to provide after-school programming and summer programming for students. Typically, we have about one hundred and twenty-five students in grades K through six participating, and that was the same this year. We held that program for four weeks, four days a week, four hours a day. So we like to say it's four by four by four. And again, we served one hundred and twenty-six students. Students become eligible for that program based upon test scores, work in their classrooms, and recommended by, recommendations by their teachers. Parents, however, can opt in or out of that program for their students. Part of the requirement of our Stars Academy program is each teacher develops a continual learning program, plan, excuse me, for the participants. They take a pre-assessment. They work on skills throughout the four weeks, and then they are assessed again at the end with a post-assessment. And out of our one hundred and twenty-six students, one hundred and twenty-one of those students made gains from the pre-assessment to the post-assessment. So that's ninety-six percent. Gains ranged from one to two points in some cases, but as I was going through those scores, there were also students with forty to fifty-point gains over that forty, that, those four weeks. Teachers did make note of that summer learning loss. So from the point school ended in May to the point this program started in July, there was a noticeable regression of skills for some students. So that program is, that goal of that program is just to get them back up before school starts again. You can also see there at each grade level how many students were participated, and then what their focus area was. Again, it's four hours a day. They hit it hard, but we need to be really focused, focus our efforts on what they really want to work on at each of those grade levels. So any questions about either the Read and Feed or summer Stars Academy? Really great programs to partner.
Tell me about the recertification again, and what the process is, and, I mean, is it something that we are worried about?
Well, you know, and, you know, I'm not an expert in that area. I know that MDE, the program is a USDA-funded program. MDE determines eligibility based on some sort of census formula. And so be, once you're ineligible, you have a five-year grace, so you can be eligible, you can continue the program for five years after that. But this is the year, they were very clear, that we'll need to re-qualify again. And so it's nothing, there's nothing we can do necessarily. It's just based on that, that information that they're gathering on the raid, the homes within a radius of that middle school site and their economic status. Does that make sense?
Yes.
But the nice part for us is we have that safety net of North Elementary being eligible. So North Elementary just became eligible. So worst-case scenario, North becomes our primary Read and Feed site. Now, is that as optimal as that Center of Town site? In my opinion, no. We have lots of camps that come to the middle school, use the facilities, that type of thing. It would be wonderful to have those two sites again, but I will certainly keep you posted. And if there's anything I could do to change things with our eligibility or make sure that we are, I certainly will. That's a great question.
So a little bit of the good news and the bad news. Good news is that if you have people improving their status financially, you have fewer who fall into the category of eligibility. So if you have a rising tide and people are doing better within the radius of this, of that particular building, then you're, you're in or out. So it, it's a program that you'd like to continue because of the success that it has, but it's not one where you want to jump up and down and say, "Oh, great. Less than fifty percent of our kids are above the poverty line. Yay!" You know, I mean, we don't want to cheer that. We just really like to see this program continue because it works.
It does work. And this year, the high school summer programming was held at the middle school just for that reason, in feeding kids. So we shifted everything to that site. It was really a hub because, you know, the, the high school site, the odds of that becoming eligible are quite low.
And I think the other thing that's overlooked a little bit too, T, is that we feed, you know, between nine hundred and a thousand adults during that period of time as well. And they pay for what they're taking, but, you know, so it's, it's serving a wide range of our citizens.
Yes, for sure. And, you know, adults bring their lunch. They come with their kids. A lot of adults feed their kids, and then they go home and eat. But we did, we do have our, you know, the folks that you see every day, and, and so that's, it's a great program. So appreciate the continued support of the Board for these programs. I do want to note too, these are both self-supporting programs. The Read and Feed, for every meal that is served to students, we are reimbursed, and that covers the cost of the program. And then for our Stars Academy program, that's through our ALC, as I mentioned before, and all, and we receive funding for seat hours in that program as well. So they're self-supporting programs.
Just as, just something to mention, we will be going through a recertification project for our ALC as well this year. And it's just making sure that we have all of the components in place that we need to have to qualify for it as an ALC, and we do.
We do, yes. Yeah. So wonderful. Thank you.
Thanks so much. All right. That gets us through our information items we had this evening and into reports. And as usual, we start with the principals. We have several weeks of school under their belt now.
We're not creatures of habit at all. All right. So take my Read and Feed hat off, put on my Early Childhood Administrator hat. So this is week three for preschoolers at the Early Learning Center, and things are hopping. There's nothing better than seeing three, four, and five-year-olds come off those buses and be ready to go with their new, usually it's called a pack-pack on their back. And they are ready to go, and they're about this big, some of them. So if you ever have a chance, just stop up and watch that. It's wonderful. Like I said, week three, really focused on routines and safety right now, and so we'll have the buses coming next week, and we'll practice sitting and getting on and off the bus, and listening to Mr. Paul and Mr. Don, which is super important. We do still have openings for our three- and four-year-olds, so if there are families out there who are still looking for preschool option, most of them are in the afternoon, but we still, we would encourage them to call our office. And then we're also preparing already for our first early childhood screening. Dr. Olson mentioned that earlier. Early childhood screening is required by law, and it is one of the, it is our, our function that results in the most referrals for early childhood special education. And so we really encourage families to have their children come in, and it's a screening, and so that we can make sure that they're on track developmentally. And so that's October third, so we look forward to that. And moving on up to South Elementary, we too have had, just had a fantastic start. It has gone so smoothly, and I really do credit that to the staff that is there. They take great care of kids and parents, and it is just amazing to watch that transformation from the first day of school, when they get off with their pack-packs, and they want breakfast. We can just continue on. But they just, they fall into that routine so easily, and it's not an easy task, but they've done a fabulous job with that. Kudos too to the Friends of Learning, who provided numerous students' backpacks. I believe all total there were about five hundred, five to six.
Countywide, it was over five hundred and twenty-five backpacks fully allocated.
Yeah. And it's just, it's a tremendous program, so that when they come to school, they're coming with all the supplies. They, they purchase the items specific to each school site, and, and those students walk in with the same supplies as everyone else. And it's just, it's a, it's a really, really wonderful service project that we have in our community. So thank you to the entire committee and the Alliance Club, who spearheads that. And we also had the Elks Club from Manhito, who's provided about eight or nine backpacks stuffed with, again, supplies for our students. So that whole, it takes a village to send kids to school definitely resonates in the halls of South. We have completed our fast assessments this week. That's just a little bit of an overview, so that we can get an idea of where our students are at, and it gives us some ideas on where to start with instruction. So we're happy to say that that process is done, and, and with the additions of the iPads, we've, we've now transitioned, most of our students are doing those on iPads because the students are not familiar with using a mouse anymore. It's iPads. They come in and they're familiar with phones and iPad usage. So we have, we have almost fully trans, you know, transferred to doing that assessment on the iPad, and it's been great. Last Monday, we had our first parent council meeting. We had a really great crowd, and Laura Zender, who is our new elementary counselor, presented on establishing, establishing school routines and dealing with anxieties with students. So there's that fine line. I think when you have a five-year-old that's anxious about school, is it a problem, or is this just normal anxiety? So she did a great job of kind of setting some minds at ease. And an invitation stands to all of you for this Friday, or, excuse me, Thursday evening, the best meal deal in town. You can come to the South Playground. It's Playground Night. And again, it's sponsored by our Parent Council. There'll be a meal that will be served by the FFA. We partner with them, and they'll be bringing things in. A dollar Culver snack, you can't beat that. And we know how to throw a party, and we throw it from five to six-thirty. So, and the best part is they enjoy rolling down the hill. We have all the playground equipment, all the toys out, but you'll see a number of them just.
The students are the people who are.
The students. I haven't seen many parents doing that. So, and it looks like the weather is going to hold out for us, so it should be another great night at South.
Before or after the snacks?
It's up to them. Depends on what mom it is.
Well, greetings from North Elementary, where I just want to echo what T even, Dorian talked about. Just thanks for all the teachers, support, staff. We've had a number of leadership team meetings at North in our first three weeks, and the overall theme for those leaders from those, those teachers that are serve on those teams were like, it was the best start of the school year they can remember, and some of them have twenty-plus years of experience, which is pretty impressive. And that just, just goes to all of those teachers and staff members, and the communication that they put out there, and just so much caring, including the community as well. Like Dorian said, just with backpacks, supplies, and food, you know, weekend food programs and stuff like that, just everybody's ready to serve. That's just one of the many elements that makes St. Peter just a phenomenal education, community in general, but certainly like supporting our educational institutions as much as they possibly can. North has, has definitely been in full, full speed. We've, I guess we've shifted over from the pack-packs to the backpacks. I haven't, I haven't heard of the pack-pack yet, but they're, they're getting it down definitely by second grade. I was thinking we'd have a little bit more room at North. We kind of sent a pretty large fourth-grade class up to fifth grade at the middle school, but we're actually at the exact same number. I was looking at, looking at some student numbers on my Board today, and we're, we're still up one from last year. So definitely, our numbers are right there. Four-seventy-seven, I had on my count with fourth grade, had about one-sixty-seven. So that's a pretty good number of students in there. And I, I make the rounds that first week and just try, I meet with every homeroom and welcome them back. And I always like to give the talk to the fourth graders. They're, they're the seniors on campus now, you know. Second and third graders are looking up to them and watching them, and they definitely kind of puff up their chest a little bit. That's right, I am. But they're, they're ready to roll. We had our PBS team had our first assembly, which our first theme is always building a culture for learning. The teachers do a really nice job, like sending that same message in the classroom, but then we celebrate as a whole group of, you know, four-hundred-and-seventy-seven students and all the staff member hearing all the same thing at the same time. One of the, one of the new elements the PBS team put in has a little more focus on, on staff. They, they wanted to practice the, like, the culture of being thankful. And so every Thursday, the team just sends out a Google form, and it's just called Thursday, Thankful Thursday. And there's about eighty staff members in all at North, and I would say like forty of them every week have submitted. I mean, there's a big, long list. There definitely has somebody that's risen to the top with a lot of thanks. And it's, it's, I got, I have to give a shout-out for Mr. Nick in the cafeteria. That guy is phenomenal, and he makes the best pizzas on Friday. He's, not that I'm competitive at all, but he has quite a few thanks in that lineup. So, yeah, just one example of many people to be thankful for. You know, as Dorian, we've been talking about the new math and reading curriculum. That's a super-heavy load for our fourth through, our kindergarten to fourth-grade teachers, and they are taking it in stride. Of course, it's, it's a challenge, you know, efficiency level goes down a little bit, but they're leaning on each other as a team to ask each other questions and how, how are we getting through this. I've had at least three teachers come up to me and say, you know, "Mr. Dory," I've, I've had some students come up to me and say, "This is the first year as a fourth grader that they really feel like they know what's going on and enjoy math." And that has a lot to do with how that instruction's taking place. For example, in math, it's a, it's a different rollout. It requires thinking and patterning and conversations with their peers. And so that's just, I think, one of the elements that we're going to see district, or K eight-wide as, as students are exposed to this new curriculum. And the teacher, like I said, teachers are doing a phenomenal job with that as they move forward. And.
How's the playground?
Oh, yeah. The playground is good. We have new lines. The big deal right now is we have, we have some free-throw lines on the basketball court, which we've never had before. So a lot of kids playing basketball. And I am going to work with a small group of fourth graders on Friday, weather permitting. We're going to try to mark, paint the field, football field and a soccer field. But we, but of course, math teacher and my background, I, I need to show them Pythagorean theorem, so we can figure out a ninety-degree corner out in the middle of that space. So I'm going to force them into a math, about a fifteen-minute math lesson before we get out there and do the eighty-by-forty-yard field.
Just paint the field, Coach.
Nope. Just needs to be square. So looking forward to that. But yeah, the playground is, is, yeah, the swings are super popular. Like, the kids are out there all the time. And Gaga Ball continues to be very popular, so.
Pythagorean theorem.
Ah, so at the middle school, as you know, we're moving into year three, and as such, you know, we're constantly in this state of, this heightened state of monitor and adjust as this new organization. And one of the things that we've been monitoring for the last couple of years has been our schedule. If you remember, we functioned with an eight-period day, which equated to forty-two-minute class periods, and the overall sense of that schedule was just this. periods, um, and the overall sense of that schedule was just this feeling of being rushed. Uh, it decreased our ability to build relationships, decreased our ability to deliver, you know, meaningful, engaging, uh, instruction, uh, and just really added to that idea of assembly-line education, which we're really trying to get away from, uh, in America. So, uh, this year, we opened with a four-block A-B day schedule, um, with the intent of just slowing the world down. Um, it improves our ability to build relationships, improves our ability to deliver meaningful instruction, improves, um, our ability to differentiate within that classroom because you have more time, and it decreases the amount of transition time that our kids have. Uh, we're in week three, and overall, the, the feeling is very, very positive from both staff and students. Students, uh, report less homework or being able to stay on top of their, their assignments more. Um, they report less feeling rushed or less stressed. Uh, one student said, "I hate it, Mr. Graff," and I said, "Why do you hate it?" And he said, "Because they're making me think, man." So, to me, that's, that's positive, that's very positive. Uh, and staff has really, uh, expressed just a feeling of calm and, and positive atmosphere, uh, just with the culture, uh, because of just slowing the world down. Um, so, overall, uh, it's been a good move so far. You know, and anything new, we're not perfect at it, uh, we will support the heck out of our teachers and our students in, in getting used to that, um, and continue to solicit feedback from students, staff, and the community as we go.
Well, at the high school, I feel like we, we never left. Um, we're in, we're in week four, uh, next week is midterm already, Wednesday, the twenty-fifth, I believe, is, is already midterm, so, we're, we're just full steam ahead, no time for pack-packs and no drawing lines on the field. Um, we have our first, uh, parent-teacher conference coming up next Monday, uh, and those are, you, uh, you have the ability to schedule those with specific teachers, uh, that you're interested in visiting with. Um, and it just, I've, I've been up here a lot tonight, so I did a couple of things I wanna highlight last week. Our egg instructors hosted their region, um, all of the region egg instructors, and there were about forty, there must've been at least forty to fifty, uh, teachers that were touring the facility. Uh, Mr. Reeser cooked them some smoked brisket on his homemade smoker that he may or may not keep out back. But it was just a really, it was a really great night, um, and, and people were really impressed with, with the facility. And then one other plug, uh, next Saturday, this coming Saturday, the twenty-first, uh, we're hosting a classic car roll-in for Landon, um, and any, any of the money that comes in from that will go into a scholarship in his name, so we're hoping for good weather.
Questions for anybody? Dr. Olson?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just really, uh, as, as all of you are aware, at the board table, we're, uh, we're a wash in negotiations, uh, we're, the negotiations process has started with our office support folks, our custodial group, our paraprofessional group, and upcoming with our teachers, so, that negotiations process is going on. In addition, I'm participating in the negotiations process with the Minnesota Valley Education District, and we're starting with their teacher group actually tomorrow evening. Also, just to mention, we're, as you know, working with the city of St. Peter to help conduct our upcoming school board election, that process is going well. Uh, from the superintendent search standpoint, we have a workshop scheduled for November twelfth with the Minnesota School Boards Association, Sandy Gunlock and others tied up hiring the right superintendent, so we're looking forward to that. And then I just wanna echo the, go ahead.
Before you leave, uh, I think that your intent or our intent to invite the.
Newly elected.
The newly elected.
Absolutely.
Even though they don't take office until January, they'll.
Yeah, absolutely, that's exactly the process. Uh, the, the other thing I just wanna echo is it's, it's been exciting and, and fun and energizing to be back, uh, on board, watching all of the people work to bring quality education to the students of St. Peter, so, um, and as I always like to mention to everybody, I have a vested interest, seven grandkids in the system between first grade and a senior, so, um, I'm watching carefully, and I like what I see, there are good things going on, so.
Thank you, sir. Um, board members, anything that we haven't, Tim?
You know what? I have something. I just wanna acknowledge that I think it's exciting, 'cause there's a lot of candidates out in the crowd tonight that are running for school board, and it's exciting to see a community have ten candidates on the ballot for four spots, 'cause I think there's an awful lot of communities out there that are struggling to find them, and that says a lot to St. Peter, the community, and the education system. That's all I have to say. Thanks for being here.
Yep.
Thanks for ramming.
Robert?
I'm Doug, that's it.
No, thank you.
Yeah?
No.
No. Shocker.
Um, upcoming meetings of the school board, we have scheduled, uh, study session Monday, September thirtieth, at the Middle School Media Center at six-thirty. Policy review, October the fourth, Friday at seven AM in the district office. Regular board meeting is Monday, October twenty-one, here, six-thirty, and there will also be an announcement going out for a special meeting scheduled for, special board meeting scheduled for September twenty-fifth, seven AM in the district office.
He's ready.
They're all special.
Yeah. Which brings us to our favorite agenda item to the lady on my lap.
I make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
And a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you very much. Mr. Dory, do you use a three, four, five triangle in the corner?
A squared plus B squared equals C squared. Come on.